Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. It's, uh, I'm calling to order the Board of Selectmen meeting town of Wolfboro. It's October 18th, 2017. Mr. Owen, do we have a need for non-public tonight?
If you want to review non-public meeting minutes.
Okay. First, we have approval of the minutes dated September 27th, 2017 was a special meeting. Board, any corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain from those. I'd step down.
I move we accept the minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the September 27th meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep, I abstain.
Next, we have regular meeting minutes dated October 4th, 2017. Board?
I'll make a motion to accept them as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on those meeting minutes? Seeing none, all is in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? We have the bulk vote this week, which includes weekly manifest, property tax refunds, and abatements, notices of intent to cut lumber, and a raffle permit for the Lions Club. Entertain a motion to accept the bulk vote.
I got a question.
Okay.
On the intent to cut?
Sure.
There was nothing, no estimated amounts. I think that should be checked into.
Would you like to table that?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. Table, uh, intent to cut.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. We'll vote on that first. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Owen can we follow up with that?
Sure.
Okay, I entertain a motion now to accept the rest of the bulk vote.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Under new business, Pete Chamberlain with monthly budget expenditures and revenue report.
Let's be revenues. Hopefully.
What?
Let's be revenues.
Yep.
Pete Chamberlain, Finance Director. Hopefully you had a chance to read my report for the end of September. September is that month where we should be about 75 percent of the way through the year. At this particular time, the general fund was approximately 74. The water fund came in at around 82. Electric fund, 69. Sewer fund, approximately 80. Popewalen, 61 percent. For an overall extended of 73 percent rounded. There is one item under the technology budget I'd like to bring to your attention, and that would be on page, um... Once I find it.
Should be in the front part.
The computer hardware line item, 725, shows an overage of $4,830.99. However, um, there was $7,200 that needed to be journaled out to the, uh, to the lease for the new computer software over at the fire department. I needed to create a receivable for that from the lease company, and I thought I'd done it, but missed it. So, that is actually more like $2,900 to the good.
Mr. Chairman?
Board?
I have one on, I'm back to the capital outlay, and I still do not see much activity on the 2015 Clark House Museum, Cape Park Stone Wall, another Clark House Museum, probably the engine. And those things are 2015, and are, do you know, are they going to be done this year?
I was assured by the parks director that, yes, they were in the process of being finished now. I guess you can get a chance to talk to it tomorrow night.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep on this when it gets this far. You know, we're two years out.
That's quite all right. But, no, I've had, I've had a couple of conversations with Christine, and she assured me that they were going to be taken care of, so.
This is a facetious question. How's our dog license revenue next year?
(laughing).
No answer needed.
Well, if you collect some for this year, you, I don't know, it all depends on where the dogs are if you get it next year. I'd leave that up to council, though. I've also included, uh, passed out a revenue report, and the revenue reports, revenues remain steady, a little bit ahead. Good indicator of what the year's gonna end up being, so I think we'll have a...
Any other questions for Mr. Chamberlain? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pete.
Next up is our Town Planner, has come tonight, Sullivan, explained the capital improvement plan, going to a slideshow, I believe.
Okay. Kathy Barnard, and Chairman of the Planning Board, we're here to present the 2018 to 2027 Capital Improvements Plan to you. This plan, as you folks know, is prepared yearly to serve as a guide for the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee during your budget discussions. It's a 10-year plan for recommended municipal projects over $100,000. And the plan spreads out the projects while considering the needs of the departments and the impact on the taxpayers. This plan was developed by the CIP Committee. That's a committee of the Planning Board. There are three Planning Board members on the committee, Paul O'Brien, Mike Carter, and myself. Representative from the Board of Selectmen, Linda Murray, and representative from the Budget Committee, Bob Tougher. Also, Jim Shildnik and Joyce Davis serve on the committee, and we all work on this plan along with Matt, uh, Town Manager, and all of the Department Heads. All of these folks spend significant time, uh, working to develop what, what we hope will be a good planning tool for you folks as you deliberate the budget. Committee has been meeting since early August. We then submitted the plan to the Planning Board. Last night, they held a public hearing on the document and voted unanimously to adopt the plan and forwarded it to the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee. We hope that you'll find it a good guide and a useful planning tool. I want to really thank all the members of the committee and the Department Heads and Dave and Matt for all the time that they've spent, and I'm gonna turn this over to Matt now to do a PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Really good overview, and I want to apologize to the folks who heard the presentation last night. This will be an exact duplication of that presentation, so hopefully you'll enjoy it just as much the second time around. Kathy did an excellent overview of the plan. I want to start by noting something that you don't see up here, but particularly that the CIP is really a planning tool and not a budgetary tool. So, the recommendations you see contained within the CIP are not binding in any way. They are intended only to guide the Budget Committee and the Board of Selectmen through the, through the identification of warrant articles and budgeting for that 10-year period that Kathy mentioned, for capital projects. I also wanted to note that Kathy mentioned these projects are those over $100,000. You'll see a few projects this evening that I discussed that are less than $100,000, but are part of larger, larger asset management plans or capital plans. So, we do have some numbers up here that will be less than $100,000, she mentioned. These capital projects are intended to be prioritized in the context of the master plan, which is really the guiding document for the Planning Board and the community. The projects are submitted by Department Heads. Department Heads meet with the CIP Committee, the CIPC, on a regular basis. They scope those projects out, they have discussions with the CIPC, and eventually those projects get programmed into the final CIP plan. And obviously, that plan was presented last night to the Planning Board for review, and the Planning Board did unanimously adopt it. So, tonight is a presentation to the Board to inform you of the plan's findings. And I do apologize, some of the text you'll see here is quite small, but I'll do my best to walk through this visual presentation with some of the findings of the plan, or results of the plan. What you're looking at here is the 2018 project expenditures and/or contributions. You'll see a large spike over on the right-hand side of the middle there. That is a $3.8 million potentially bonded project for the library renovation and addition project. That project is currently scoped at $5 million. However, there's a 1.2, and potentially due to further fundraising, more private matching funds. So, the bonded amount shown here is at 3.8 million rather than the 5 million that the project necessitates. Moving from left to right now, you'll see on the left-hand side, we have the MED 390 line construction. This electric line was actually, the design engineering for this was actually authorized by the last town vote. That design engineering has been completed, so we're looking at construction of that project in 2018, and I'll cover that project in a little more detail in a bit. Town road upgrades, an annual project programmed by the Department of Public Works and their road upgrade plan. Bay Street sidewalk project, dockside building, restrooms renovation, the dockside parking lot, that's a cap reserve contribution. Sewer infiltration reduction, that's the I and I that you may have heard about in the past. Effluent disposal upgrades, the water treatment plant control panel upgrade, Pine Street water main replacement, library renovations, as I mentioned before, that large number there, and then a few cap reserve count contributions here. The fire truck and apparatus cap reserve contribution, Public Works vehicle and equipment cap reserve account contribution, the Abenaki Ski Area contribution, wastewater treatment project cap reserve account, and the building maintenance cap reserve. Those last couple being contributions to capital reserve accounts. So, those are 2018 expected projects, and I will review those in more detail in just a few minutes here. Looking at the 2018 projects a bit differently, based on the expected, again, being it's an advisory document, the expected funding type, you'll see the largest portion here is a bond. Again, that's that $3.8 million bond that's anticipated for the library renovation and addition project. Going to the right-hand side, that reddish color there, that is cap reserve account withdrawals. So, those are cap reserve accounts that we've actually already funded, and these are projects that are expected to be funded out of those cap reserve accounts that exist right now. That 13% is a cash, or those are numbers that will have to go to the voters for authorization. 5% is the sewer fund, 9% is the electric fund, and that 6% is actually a settlement, and that's related to the effluent disposal, and I'll cover that in a bit more detail in some subsequent slides here. I did want to take a step back and look at the last 10 years of historic versus approved cap reserve amounts. You'll see the blue color here is the amount that the CIP has requested as part of its plan, and the pink is the number that was actually approved by the voters for that year. I think the point I made last night to the Planning Board is that if you look back at 2006, there's actually quite a bit of disparity between the amount that was requested versus that, that which was approved. And moving really to the 2015 to 2017 period, you can see that the requests have gotten very realistic and been quite, quite in line with what the voters are willing to approve. So, those numbers have aligned quite well. And to me, that signals a healthy CIP process and some really smart project planning by the Department Heads and the town as a whole. Looking out into the future, at the totality of the 10-year CIP, this, this chart here shows the proposed CIP project requests based on year, moving from 2018 out to 2027. You will see there's a decline and then a dip out to 2024. What that really means, again, being advisory, is that there haven't been projects programmed by the Department Heads for that year. That does not mean that there won't be projects that will arise or be programmed as part of future CIPs, but based on our 10-year projection, this is what we're looking at, and we see there's some variability to it, but we expect that to change in the future. Total projected bond service, this is bonded-only projects, thinking back to that funding type chart that I put up before. This is bonding projects only. This is a projection of potential debt service going out for the next 20-year period for those bonded projects. You'll see, again, we have a decline here. That's principally because we have a lot of debt service requirement moving into the future, and not a whole lot of bonded projects included in the CIP at this time. So, we do see a natural decline there. This is a little bit busy. I'll try to walk through this efficiently. These are our capital reserve account balances, and what we tried to do here is look at potential cap reserve expenditures over the next 10-year years, look at also the cap reserve contributions that are expected over the next 10 years, and determine whether or not we'll be able to keep those cap reserve accounts in good health moving forward. You will note that there is one in the red number here, if you will, and that's on the fire department apparatus cap reserve, so we do need to look at how to address that based on the expected engine purchase that the fire department has proposed. But you'll see generally that we're able to main relatively stable funding within these cap reserve accounts, though we expect, based on really the nature of cap reserve accounts, that there will be additional expenditures needed in the future that are not reflected here. So, I wanted to dive, hopefully briefly, into the 2018 proposed projects a bit and give you a little background. I already discussed this project at some level. This is the library expansion renovation project. Again, it's a $5 million project. At this time, I, as part of the CIP, we expect 3.8 of public funds and 1.2 of a minute, sort of a minimum private contribution with ongoing fundraising. It's an expansion and repair to the existing library facility with per-voter authorization, potentially. Construction in 2018 with a completion date of 2020. And one thing I wanted to note here as well is that due to the fact that this plan is really related to the master plan, I did include some references here to what master plan chapter these projects are sort of supported by, but I won't review those for each project. You'll just see them listed at the bottom. Engine 2 replacement for the fire department. This is a replacement of a 1998 piece of apparatus, and this is really the first due piece for areas outside of the hydrant district. So, based on the fire department presentation, this is really a critical upgrade on, as you can see, a 20-year-old piece of equipment, and that's expected to be funded out of that cap reserve, that fire department cap reserve account that I mentioned before. Electric and public works departments, the 390 line reconstruction. The 390 line, as you can see here, was constructed in 1964, and it's the sole power supply to the town of Wolfboro. And it connects, it's a 3.6 mile long, and it connects to the town of our source energy source. It's near the Glendon Street parking lot. Again, I mentioned that design engineering was authorized by the voters in 2017. That work has been done, so now we're at the construction phase of this project, and that will be funded out of the Electric Enterprise Fund. Vehicle cap reserve purchases, this is on the public works and highway side of things. This is a, the $152,000 you see here is actually a capital reserve contribution. It's not the expected expenditure out of that account. However, the 2018 expenditures are listed here. That includes replacement of HD-7 and HD-27, and again, as I just noted, that will be taken out of a cap reserve account. Further public works department projects, Bay Street sidewalks and, Bay Street sidewalk engineering. This is the engineering for a potential sidewalk to connect the Elm Street pathway to Mill Street. This is looked at in the context of some future development opportunity along Bay Street, including the New Hampshire Boat Museum, and additional projects that are, have an economic development component to them that we believe might necessitate the installation of some connectivity to the downtown. If this is approved in 2018, that design engineering work would take place then with potential construction in 2019 and potentially funded via a bond. So, you'll see a mix here of current revenue source and 10, 10-year bond potentially as well. Annual road maintenance, this includes a few different upgrade projects, and I've listed them here. 2018 projects include Kiway and Road, Tryon Track Road, College Road, and Martin Hill Road. There was addition, an additional CIP request for the Railroad Avenue layout and extension. That was actually integrated into this by the Public Works Director based on a recommendation of the CIP Committee. So, you'll see this number at $870,000 for 2018. A bit smaller text here, so I'll try to review this in detail. The first item here is the dockside building restrooms expansion improvements. This is an effective tripling of the existing facilities in the dockside area. Also, it includes some weatherization and some winterization of that facility that would allow the facility to be, to remain open during the winter for snowmobilers or other patrons. This is proposed to be funded in 2018 out of the general fund with a current revenue source. Expanded and existing dock engineering and immediate repairs, this is a three-part project totaling $115,000. The first phase of this is the design and engineering for repair work to the existing seven recreational docks owned and maintained by the town of Wolfboro, including some repair work to the cribbing along the Smith River and Bulkhead. The second piece of this is the design engineering for the 330-foot linear expansion that was proposed and went to a public hearing in front of the Board of Selectmen in August of this year. That's potentially going to be, or it is included here, the design engineering for that as well. And then the third piece of this is immediate construction repairs, so not design engineering work, but repairs themselves to the existing dock infrastructure in the dockside area. So, three components to this. Construction on the repairs to the existing docks and the dock expansion are expected to begin in 2019 or 2020, but based on the design engineering work, certainly those numbers could change. In the water department, I mentioned the control panels. Here's another example where you see $175,000 contribution. That's actually to a larger asset management plan. However, in this case, we're looking in 2018 at upgrades to the existing control panels. Much of the equipment within the water treatment plant is antiquated and needs upgrade, and unfortunately, replacement parts are very difficult to find, so a full replacement is needed in this case. But this will be funded out of the Water Enterprise Fund. The Pine Street water line replacement, this is a 125-year-old water main. Those of you who have lived in New England for some time or have paid attention to the news, know that we have an infrastructure crisis going on here in the state. Lots of aging infrastructure, many of it, much of it is over 100 years old. This is an excellent example. And in this case, we have an undersized line that is actually tuberculated as well, meaning that there's corrosion deposits within that pipe, so potentially a safety concern as well, should it not be attended to. This will be coordinated with the Pine Street sewer, road, and sidewalk projects as well in 2019, but this 2018 work will occur first. Sewer department projects, the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Again, this is part of a larger improvement plan that's managed by the Public Works Department. In 2018, the scheduled improvements include the electrical wiring upgrades, dry embed upgrades, and also valve and buried pipe repairs as well. But again, this is a larger, this is a contribution to a larger plan. Wastewater effluent disposal updates in study. This is funding the design permitting and construction of a long-term disposal solution. If you've, if you have a history of the existing effluent disposal system, you know we've had a, sort of a tumultuous history there. This will take greater than one year to complete and will cost in total $3.7 million. One thing I did want to note here is this is funded via settlement payments from that tumultuous history that I mentioned before, and therefore does not have an impact on the municipal tax rate. And lastly, I mentioned the I and I project. This is an ongoing effort to identify issues with infiltration and inflow, and this is really specific recommendations by design permitting and construction upgrades, the sewer collection system. I believe you've seen this project in the past, but it's included here. This is one of those numbers. It's under $50,000, but part of a larger plan as well. I did want to finally touch on the 2019 Horizon Projects. Although not expected to be at a warrant for next year, these are important as they could come up in the near future. I won't read through these in detail, but I will leave these up here as this is my last slide. I would note that these projects were not specifically reviewed by the CIP Committee. However, they were requested by Department Heads for year 2019. And that's all I have.
Board?
I have just a couple of things to point out. The fire truck, the $550,000 is out of present funds. Based on what we requested last year, the taxpayers will probably see a warrant article for $186,000 to be added to that fire truck capital reserve. Same thing happens when you see the public works truck we're asking for. This project shows 152,000, but a warrant article be, will be for 170. That's what we usually put in. The same thing with the wastewater treatment plant. You see 132,000 here, but we usually put in 125,000. That's what the appropriation, that's what the warrant articles will be. The Board of Selectmen are the agent to expend the monies in the capital reserve account. The reason you see these, and this is all clear to you, is we feel we owe you the responsibility of telling you what we're taking out before we ask you to put any money in. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to concur with the adoption of the 2018 to 2027 CIP.
Second that.
Your motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion from the board? None, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Looks on the agenda of the board is, uh, let's discuss the Class 6 road building permit application.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to step down.
So, I'll open it up to the board. Anything you wish to discuss? Sure.
Mr. Chairman, as the board knows, at your special meeting on September 27th, the board held a public hearing on the application for a building permit on the Class 6 portion of Stonem Road, and the board allowed everybody to say what they had to say until nobody had anything left to say that evening, so the hearing was clo, so the hearing was closed. The hearing was closed. A draft decision has been developed that is in your packet for your review and deliberation, and I'm available to, well, I would point out that the decision was drafted in such a way that it addresses each criterion in the Board of Selectmen's Class 6 road policy. So, it's intended to be, you know, to comprehensively address the criteria in the policy.
Board members? Brad, Ian?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start out. As Mr. Owen said here, we had the public hearing here last month and went through all the input from the, from both sides, from the applicant and from the, from the neighbors and the butters up there on the area. We also had input via letters from Department of Public Works and, you know, and the fire department, basically signing off, saying that the proposals that coming through fit their criteria. In reading and going through all of our procedures and the elements we're supposed to look at, you know, considering the mission of the road, connecting roads, effects on the municipal services, and, and all these other, let's see, if it goes along with the master plan, will it create a financial burden on the town, grading, drainage, you know, gates and bars were, were part of the thought process, any stone wall work in there. So, after reviewing all that in my mind, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of approving the building permit for the, for the Simmons up there on Stonem Road.
Let me make a motion.
Sure.
I would move that pursuant to the authority under RSA 674:411(c)1, that the board approve the application of Michael A. Simmons, dated August 25th, 2017, for a building permit on his property located on the Class 6 portion of Stonem Road in accordance with the board's written notice of decision of this date.
I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Mr. Owen, looks like we have a request from the Electric Department to remove a tree on Cotton Mountain Road.
Yes, this is a, a tree that is in jeopardy of, of collapsing at any time, and you've got photos of it, it's hollow at its base, and it is on a... photos of it, it's hollow at its base, and it is on a scenic road, but there is a provision in the statute that allows the Board of Selectmen to declare it to be a public nuisance tree and to authorize its immediate removal. And the department is seeking to have the board exercise that authority this evening.
I don't know, can you get a picture of that? So, people at home can see what it looks like? It looks very hollow throughout the center of it, and I think, just for safety, there's no question that there is a problem. We had a tree on our property that, that was hollowing in the center, and at one point in the wind, it just split in half, so I think this makes sense.
And you can see the power lines run right beside the tree, and if it comes down, it's going to take out the electric lines.
I'll move that we have the tree removed per the request.
Second.
Your motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on it? Alls in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, we have revised welfare guidelines.
This is hard to find any of the red marks.
Good evening. I'm Amy Capone-Muccio, the Welfare Director, and this is kind of an annual housekeeping item, and I only have three things to change. One's on page 14 for the shelter sponsorship agreement, and this is an agreement that a client would sign when they enter a shelter to follow the rules and regulations. And you'll notice the paragraph I put under that this will probably get a bigger update after Families in Transition opens. Page 15, it was just a language cleanup to make it sound a little better. And lastly, Form M is something that I already use in my computer system for the software, but I want to use it in the application, and it's a form that the landlord will fill out to provide better communication between myself, the landlord, and the tenants.
Other than that, unless you have any questions?
Board, any questions?
I'll move to approve and sign the revised welfare guidelines as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Owen, looks like next we have a payment in lieu of taxes with Hearthstone Homes.
Yes, it's that time of year that we revisit this payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Hearthstone Homes, and I discussed it with the representatives of Hearthstone Homes. They agreed to increase their financial commitment under the, in, pursuant to the payment in lieu of taxes, from $19,000 to $20,000 in the coming year, so it's a healthy increase, and so I recommend its approval.
Well, I'm fine with it. What we're really giving them is a $3,493.85 break on a what would normally be a pilot in lieu of taxes, and I'm comfortable with that.
As long as they're making progress towards-
Getting there.
The full payment.
Yep, I agree.
I tell them that's, that's fine, as long as they're making progress.
Yes. I'll make a motion that we accept the payment in lieu of taxes for Hearthstone Home, Inc.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, tonight, we're going to move into some budget hearings. First off, we have Libby Museum.
I'm Alana Albee, the Director of the Libby Museum, and, Mr. Chairman, if you'd allow me a few minutes to give you an update on the progress of the Libby this year before we launch into the budget figures.
Sure.
You'll remember that the last time I was here, I presented a proposal to adjust the admissions charges at the Libby, and that was implemented essentially to an admission fee of $5 per adult, free to veterans, and free to all children under 16. And this year, that had a major impact on our promised increase in revenue. I think Selectmen Murray had asked what I expected for an increase. I estimated it would be about 30%, but actually, it's hit a 56% increase in income to the town over the, what was the income in 2016, bringing in roughly just over $4,800 this year. The number of visitors for the museum was also up 58% over 2016, and the highest in the six years, including the 100th Anniversary Celebration. Those are the six years that I have records for. We've enjoyed large numbers of groups, including the ultimate group of the Carpenter 3rd Graders. We had over 80 of them in last Friday, Brewster grandparents, town employees, and we celebrated the National Smithsonian Museum Free Day, as well as the Capital Improvement Committee and the Adenaki Tower Association Annual Meeting. We hosted also three Friends of the Libby meetings. This year, we had some new things happen, including a new logo, refreshed the website, had the first-ever movie night at the museum, which was very popular, and three monthly art exhibits. We've received donations of Native American artifacts, including arrowheads, wedding vessels, and lithographic prints, taxi derme from Hennika Library, including an eagle, a fitch, and a large rattlesnake, and many fossils and birds. We also took possession of the tree slice from Crescent Lake School, and that's now on our nature trail. Overall, my approach to my first year as the Director of the Libby was to take care of the collection. We began in electronic inventory for the first time, and thanks to Keith Simpson here at the town, we managed to source free software. We're 50% through the inventory. We've cleaned many of the displays, began the process of Ty-Vac covers for winter to care for the items. And as we go forward, we'll talk more about the public safety issues and some of the building repairs. So, that's a brief summary of year one for me.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go through it line by line. We'll start with the 100 series.
Right. You want me to talk this through? Sorry.
No, we'll, if we have questions, we'll ask. That'll be probably the most efficient way to go through it. 200 series? 300 series?
On the 300, I think it makes sense to add the cellphone on there. We do with everybody else, so.
Okay.
I'm in favor of that. No, no. Do you, are you, is your cellphone paid for by the town? Do you get 30? That's what I wanted to add, 30, $30 we pay for everybody else's.
So, 30 times-
Five months.
Five months, 30 times the five.
Are you adding 150 to that?
Yeah, I would like to make that my-
Six hundred to the budget, so you're making seven-
Seven fifty-two, yep.
Seven fifty-two.
That's what I'd like.
Okay, I'll-
That's my motion.
I'll second that. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anything else on the 300 series?
Mr. Chairman, I'd propose an increase in outside services, which included $170 for pest control and 300 for spider brushing.
Looks, I mean, it's, it's all written there, so, I mean, that's, that's exactly what we want, you know, detailed. I don't see a problem with that. Is anyone else on the board to have a problem with it?
No, I thought that made sense. Do you see the, you, it's just that detail that's there, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, 400 series?
Let me go back to the 435, building maintenance. There has been very little spent to date. I would imagine you probably have something coming in, or there's only $233.93.
We do have, this is only up to August, isn't it?
September.
September. And we do have some tree felling at the back of the building, and overall, you'll see there's some over expenditure in other areas and of work to the bottom line.
Okay, so you didn't do it because you overspent somewhere else? That's what you're telling me? Okay. I think we, you know what, I might want that noted in the budget under this category, so the Budget Committee knows that the reason this wasn't fully expended is that you applied it somewhere else.
Yeah. 500 series?
I think, I think some of the questions that you are asking is in the reinstatement list in the back, so as I went down, was to add the cellphone, then the, it seems to me that we should add the pest control and spider brushing, and the other one is the increase in electricity, because we did approve those fans. Those three, to me, are obvious. So, I'll make a motion on line 380 to add $470.
I'll second that.
On line 410, electricity?
I can do, you want me to do both of them together, or do you want us to vote on-
We can do that. Let's do, yeah, we'll do 380. Motion's been made and seconded. Alls in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, and then the last one is 410, electricity, $573.
Second.
Alls in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I don't know what people feel about the other ones, but those, to me, were just obvious.
Board, on the, let's see, we have office, equipment, printing, seasonal brochures and posters, parade float brochures, Laker, and travel meetings, collection of Libby Museum items, library advertising, general mileage for Libby Museum business.
Personally, I'd like to revisit those. I think you have a capital outlay in the back also, and so I would like to add that on our revisit and see what part of the capital outlay we do before I add those other.
Okay.
Could I respond briefly on a couple of those items, just for clarification? The brochures and the parade, well, the brochures and the advertising, printing and advertising, at the moment, that's one of those areas where I've gone over budget because, and in fact, ran out of brochures at the museum this summer because I ran out of finance. That, those are perhaps the most important, the others I can manage without.
Okay, moving on to capital outlay for Libby. It looks we have 2018 Libby new ADA ramp. You want to just talk about the ramp for a second?
Sure. And the ADA ramp is the ramp at the back of the building, which sits hard up against the rear wall. It's exacerbating the moisture into the building and causing black mold in the office and room where the children meet in the summertime. I mean, everyone knows about the moisture issues, but because the drain is actually blocked, the water is sitting there, so what we've done is we've had a drawing, I think the drawing's been shared, for moving the ramp away from the wall in order to reduce the mold in the back of the building.
Board members, any questions?
I do. I, you know, we asked for your priority and your ranking, and you ranked them both first. Well, what I was looking for, which one do you want first and which one do you want second? What's the most important of those two to you?
Between the ADA ramps and the Ty-Vac winter covers?
Yep, uh-huh, yep.
Okay, it's a tough call. Well, a point of clarification, the Ty-Vac covers, of which this is an example, so people understand, is to cover the items in the museum to save them from the moisture. It's a special cloth, and is actually less than $10,000, because we were able to source some funds and start already, hence one cover here, and we've spent $3,000, so that's actually a $7,000 item. The ADA ramp, of course, is a health and safety issue, is the first priority. The second priority is the Ty-Vac covers, but please note that the second priority, if not done, will deplete the collection even further. It's already facing serious depletion from the moisture.
And if I had all the money in the world, I'd give it to you. What we have in capital outlay is over $3,000. The board's going to have to make some cuts. What we don't make, the Budget Committee is going to make. That's why I asked you which one. So, I would be, if, if your first choice is the ramp, I would leave the ramp in and take the Ty-Vac out, because you're telling me the ramp's more important, and hope that there'd be somebody who'd give the Libby some money for that, or we do it in another year, or if you think you could go one more year without the ramp, we could give you the Ty-Vacs. But I think that we need to cut it back to one. That's what I feel personally.
Yeah, I think on a, you know, look at the numbers part of it, you're right, we need to kind of pick one over the other, you know, being up there the last few years and seeing, especially in the springtime, when we open up in there, the mold issue that we've been having there, and that is, you know, definitely a health issue there too, what we're dealing with, you know, on the safety end of it, would put that in an upper category for me also, so I would, I would support the ADA ramp, the storage shed, you know, being moved out there to, is a, is a number-one priority there to fund.
Any other questions on this?
Then I would make a motion to remove the Ty-Vac winter covers and leave the ADA ramp and storage shed in.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion?
I'd probably be more liberal and vote for everything recommended, but I'll go along with the board. That's the one, that's the one, the one museum we own, and the budget is very small, so.
Any other discussion? Alls in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we have the Conservation Commission.
Hello, I, I'm, sorry, I'm not used to speaking to a microphone. I'm Lenore Clark. I am the Vice Chairman of the Conservation Commission. We are not requesting an increase in funding from 2017, so I'm pretty much just here to answer questions.
Okay. We'll start with the 100 series. We'll start with the 100 series.
I have, I have 490. You haven't spent anything this year. It's other property services. And you list for this coming year, mowing Goodwin Basin, invasive species management, application fees to the New Hampshire Division of Pesticide Control, and tree removal in town gardens. Do you have some of those projects that are going to take place this year?
Yes, actually, we are treating for invasive species out at the Front Bay Park. It's either happened today or it's happening tomorrow.
Okay.
And Dan Coons, who's the chairman, actually just emailed me today about the need to mow Goodwin's Basin, so that is also coming up.
Okay, yeah, because it would be nice to get that expense on this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, continuing on, 500 series? And 800?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Town Clerk.
Pat's not here. Pat's, Pat's had her eyes done.
Well, I know Pat has got the week off.
She was notified by the State.
Agreed to the date. Well, she's not here, so I don't know.
All right, didn't she just have a cataract operation? I, my feeling is we should put her off to another night.
It's fine.
Do what with her?
Move it to another night.
I know she had her.
Talk to her and move it to another night. Go with the tax collector.
Good evening, Brenda LaPointe, Tax Collector. The Tax Collector's budget this year is virtually the same. There are some increases in expenditures for healthcare and things like that for personnel that have had some life changes. This year, we had some new choices for bill payment. They were expanded to include interactive voice response systems, so people can pick up the phone now and make a phone call to make their payments online for their electric bills or tax bills. And we also included invoices that can be received via text messages. And both of these things were added at no cost to the town this year. The Electric Department's meter reading program is on track to be completed this year, which you probably heard from the Electric Department. So, we're expecting some changes in our billing system because of that, so we will have less need to have special readings, and the readings will be closer to the, the bills will be closer to the date that the bills, that the readings are taken. So, that's a good thing, but it, and again, it has no impact on the budget. The only thing that I'm asking for in this budget is for a check scanner. Our check scanners last between five and seven years with approximately $70,000 a check, 70,000 checks a year running through the system. The last two of the four scanners were replaced in 2015. And one of the scanners is now seven plus years old, and we'd just like consideration to have that replaced.
Okay, we'll start with the 100 series.
I have a question on the 100 series. I see that there's no funds for a deputy tax collector. Do you not have a deputy anymore?
No, I have a deputy tax collector, but I believe part of the negotiations this last year included an increase for her.
We did away with the separate stipend, and it was rolled into her regular compensation.
Okay.
Anything else in the 100 series? 200 series? 700 series?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion on line 740 to add $720 for a new scanner.
Seven twenty?
Seven twenty.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 800 series?
Relatively speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have assessing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd Hayward, your contract assessor. Appears as though our budget request increase is 0.68 percent, and mostly, I would say, attributed to wages and benefits. But I would defer those questions to the town manager and the finance director, if I could, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
I'll start with the 100 series.
Yeah, I have a question on the 300 series. Abatement processing, 382. What I hear you saying is that you just put the amount that was in the contract, but it doesn't seem like there will be that amount of abatements.
That's possible. I think this year's, this year's abatements are, for the most part, finished. I have been working the last couple of weeks with one of the tax reps, is dealing with a couple of BTLA cases. Potentially, there could be a little bit more once the tax bills go out in November, so there might be some, that processing that happens then, but the lion's share will come next year. So, you're correct. I would say this is just a contracted number, and it's, if we don't use it, we, I don't charge you for it.
I, I don't know how you feel, Mr. Owen. Should we leave it in and let the Budget Committee play with it, or?
It's what the contract calls for, it's the contracted hours. May not use them all, but if he doesn't use them all, then we don't pay it.
Okay, I'll, I'll go along with that.
Anything else in the 300 series? 400? And 800? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Wolfboro Community TV. Is here requesting a supplemental budget request.
Hello, Mary DeBries. I'm here tonight as a volunteer chair of Wolfboro Community Television, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving us this opportunity to bring to your attention our unusual, unanticipated financial scenario. It's important to our Board of Directors for Wolfboro Community Television that we always stay in communication with the selectmen, and we, again, thank you for giving us your time tonight. Additional members of the Board of Directors are Bruce Farr, pardon me, Bruce. And Bruce is Treasurer and Vice Chair. And also, members from the community, Ken Parsons, Alan Bailey, Cecile Chase. We have Brad Harriman as the Selectman's representative. And also, here tonight is Board Secretary from Brewster Academy, Marcia Eldridge, right here. And also, Wendy Fenderson, representing the Governor Wentworth Regional School District, and again, a volunteer member of the board. And I'd like to turn things over to Wendy, if I could, and she, she'd like to talk with you as well.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to kind of give you my scenario. I've been on the board a short time here, as I was newly represented to the school district. And I just want to say, on my assessment, Mr. Goodwin has been working over the past several months to ensure that the Wolfboro Community TV station equipment remains viable and current with the ever-changing world and technology. He has also expanded the use of our video capabilities and ensuring that our equipment is always functioning and is always at full capacity. He has worked significantly hard to improve the environment in which our current equipment sits, as he does request, talk about the air conditioning improvements that we did make at the Lake Freezon Technology Center, and that will last within, to ensure that the equipment will last far into the future. An area of significant improvement he has made regarding microphone capability and the live sound feed from the station to the broadcast, as well as uploading our videos on YouTube, which allows access to Wolfboro Community TV anywhere our community members may travel to. It has been such an improvement, we were able to receive accolades from Senator Gene Shaheen's office, saying, "Wow, what a great community asset that Wolfboro has. Your quality of sound is superb." As a new board member, I am proud of all that has been accomplished on the, on the behalf of the Wolfboro Community TV station. It is not just an asset to Wolfboro, but it is to all the surrounding communities. These were necessary changes that have benefited our viewers and enabled the Wolfboro to have a 21st century community station as it, at its disposal. So, just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm here, ready to answer any technical questions that you may have.
You state your name for the record?
Yes, sir. Timothy Goodwin, Executive Director for Wolfboro Community Television. We've made, we've made good strides, and we really would like to end the year well, but we're needing some help to do that, and we're asking that maybe you could help us out.
Board, Red?
I'll just comment a little bit here to, to bring everybody up to date here. You know, these, these overages were brought to our attention probably the last couple of meetings we've had up there and stuff, and talking about ways of how to, how to fund it and things, and I think I'd emailed, you know, Pete and Dave on how we got there and stuff like that. I know one of the, it was a fundraiser that we anticipated making a good chunk of money on, was actually, didn't end up running this year, which was the Rotary Club auction. The Rotary Club had a, I guess, an aging group there, and a couple of the people that did most of the legwork couldn't do the legwork this year, so they ended up postponing this year.
That's correct.
So, that kind of left us on a scrambling on ways to figure out, you know, how to come up with money. So, I suggested to the board, at one of the last meetings, to, you know, present it to the Board of Selectmen, bring it to the attention, and see if there's anything they can do to help out. So, that's why we're here tonight, so. A lot of these items that were done, as you, if you read down through them, like the air conditioner system, was a 50-50 split with the school. They did pay half of that. It was definitely needed in there, because as Timothy pointed out in here, that it, what, twice during the winter, the station shut down because it heated up too much in there, things like that. So, there's, a lot of these things have been great improvements to the quality, as Wendy had pointed out from the, from the letter we got from Gene Shaheen there and stuff. I think we've made great strides there on the technology end of the, of the station there and stuff, so.
I'll add the kudos, really, for that sound quality, is to you, the Board of Selectmen, when you added in this sound system that's here, and that was before I came onboard, but it's efforts like that that make the difference for the community.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What I handed out, this is, I think there was a request for information about how much we receive in the franchise fee each year, and what the budget has been for Wolfboro Community TV. You can see the, the last year for which we received the franchise fee was 2016. We'll probably get the 2017 franchise fee early in 2018. We received $127,672. The station's budget that was approved was $96,800. The difference went into the general fund of the town and got, you know, reallocated, re-appropriated, as it were. Finance Director and I have discussed this, and this is, in effect, a request for an additional, funding request of $6,151. If the board wishes to approve this, it would be a staff recommendation that you just go ahead and overexpend the cable channel line item in the executive budget. And then, the, there will be some surpluses in some of these other line items in the executive budget, which will hopefully, you know, cover this, this additional amount. If not, you have other areas of the general fund budget, like the assessing department, where they're not going to be using all their appropriations, and it, it will, it will cover it as far as the bottom line budget goes.
I have to congratulate you, as, as has been done by others, going back five years or something, the, the failure of people getting reception and blanking out was a subject of every other Selectman's meeting. You know, it hasn't been at all recently, and I am very proud of you and what you're doing, and I certainly will vote yes on this if it comes to a vote.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with this. You know, I think that what we're getting in franchise fees has kept on going up, and we, in 2000, in '15, they got $99,000, and then in 216, it was cut back to 96. Yet, our franchise fees have gone up, so I feel comfortable that we could allocate this $6,151.63 and overspend it in the executive budget. I did go through the other budgets today, and as Dave's pointed out, you have some in assessing, we have some in the town clerk in terms of elections, we didn't use all those. So, I feel comfortable that this will not overextend the budget, and I will support it. And I think you have improved it greatly. I don't get calls anymore. I love it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion. Do we need a motion for this?
Let's do a motion.
Did the Wolfboro Community TV be authorized to overexpend by 6,000, add $6,152 to cover these unforeseen expenses? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looks like a member of the Pathways Committee has requested, I'm on the agenda tonight, to discuss signage downtown about bicycles.
Yes, and I also have a handout relative to that item.
Good evening, my name's Jim Nup. I'm kind of a newcomer to town. I've been here about 10 years on the Cotton Valley Trail Committee and the Pathways Committee, and I've worked at the Nordic Skier, tuning bikes, renting bikes. So, I have a passion for bicycles, as you might guess. I'm here- I'm here tonight to ask for the Selectmen's, Board of Selectmen's, support for a request to the state for two signs at either end of the downtown area that indicate cyclists may use a full lane of those travel lanes. Signs 30 inches by 30 inches. I'm not normally a big proponent of signage.
30 inches.
But I think in this case, it's going to increase, help to increase, the safety margin for cyclists using the downtown area. I do quite a bit of commuting and errand running downtown on my bike. And particularly the constriction right around where the bridge goes from Back Bay to One of Pasaki, it gets quite narrow in that area there. To qualify for these signs from the state, there is some criteria that has to be met. There are no shoulders, obviously, downtown. And as I mentioned, that constriction of the travel lane makes it very difficult with cars parked on either side for cyclists and automobiles or vehicles in that lane. So, by putting these signs at either end of town, hopefully, you make both cyclists and motorists aware that cyclists may be in that lane. A lot of people, particularly the rentals from the Nordic Skier, travel down that way to get on the Wolfboro Falls pathway and the Cotton Valley Trail. So, I just think this is one way that we can increase the safety and the awareness of vehicular traffic down there. I spoke with Dave Ford about it, and he sent out a memorandum of support. I don't know if you've all seen that.
Yes, they have received that now.
And I had a, kind of a quasi petition that I had up at the Nordic Skier for about a week, and we got quite a few signatures that way. So, like I said, this is the first step. The state still has to approve this process. I've been in touch with Bill Lambert at New Hampshire DOT. That's who the request will go through at the state level. And then, they'll evaluate the criteria, and if we meet that, they will provide the signs, however we have to pay for them. Dave says, Dave Ford said that he does have money in his budget for the signs. The two signs would be roughly about $200 with the post and everything. And then, the state will confer with Dave on the best placement of the signs.
Have there been any incidents where motorists have bullied or caused problems with cyclists? I think it's a good proposal.
A few. I think particularly during the summer months, when the traffic flow really increases downtown, I think there's some consternation, if you will, on the behalf of motorists that are surprised to see cyclists right next to them there. And it can be kind of a tricky game to play to make sure that you don't get far enough over in the lane that you're hit by someone opening a door from one of the parked cars, and yet, staying with the traffic flow. My experience has been, most of the cyclists that I've seen are pretty good about staying with the traffic flow and not weaving in and out. But I think this signage would just make it more, a bigger impression on motorists that they may see cyclists in the same lane with them.
Is that a vote item, Lou?
My only concern would be the one up by Harvest Market and its placement, because we just have gardens there, and that we make sure it doesn't take away from there, that we are careful on where we place it.
Ultimately, it's the state's call on where the signs go. Bill Lambert indicated to me that he typically does not like to see any signage where there's parking on either side of the road. So, that, the signage may actually be a little bit farther down, closer to the post office, on going from north to south, or from south to north. And then, the other end, Dave kind of indicated somewhere around the bank, but in talking to Bill, who's familiar with the downtown area, he kind of indicated that he might be inclined to place it up a little bit farther before you get to the Wolf Town from there. But again, ultimately, it's, since it's a state road, it's, you know, the final say goes to the state.
Any other questions from the Board? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have old business. Any old business? Any other business? Town managers report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a few things I'd like to mention. The Tina Fay trial is ongoing at the District Court. They'll be back in court tomorrow, I'm told. So, you'll probably be reading some more about it soon. The Town Treasurer, John Burt, reported last week that Meredith Village Savings Bank has raised the interest that it pays on town funds that are in deposit there. We're getting, we're going up from half a percent to nine tenths of a percent, so substantial increase on the general fund deposits and the conservation fund deposits, which we're getting an even lower rate. This inner-street construction project is ongoing at this point. They're mostly staging this week. Next week, you can anticipate seeing excavation of a major drainage trench going through the parking lot and by the side of TD Bank, back to the drainage ditch back alongside of Foss Field there. So, that work will begin in earnest next week.
I have a question about interest. Why are they getting so little interest? Like, the People's Bank advertises like 1.65 percent, and much over 1 percent even on short-term.
Well, for, we're very limited as to the kinds of investments that municipalities can make. If you wish, I can have Mr. Burt come here and explain.
No, 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 I just wondered, I mean, it seems to me that, if you're reading the Union Leader, the New England Bank, which they don't even know about, offers to pay 2 percent. Of course, there's probably a hundred thousand dollar limit. I just wondered why we're getting less than 1 percent. But if it's, if we can't get 2 point, or 1.5 percent or 1.3 percent, then, I'm not arguing with it, I'm just saying that we can't be nice to do.
Pursuant to the investment policy that the Board adopts each year, and it's consistent with the types of investments that municipalities are allowed to make their surplus funds. So, I can, all I can say at this point. Want more information, I'll be glad to have Mr. Burt.
As long as you're happy with it and recognize the opportunity.
I'd like to get a lot more interest, too, but... The Seven to Save event will be here in the Town Hall, in the Great Hall here, on October 27th. That's Friday evening. Starts at, what, they're going to do tours of the Town Hall and some of the other historic buildings in town, starting at 4:00 PM. And then, their event starts at 5:00 PM. Of course, the Town Hall here, plus the Kearing House, were both on the Seven to Save list. And so, they're using Wolfboro as sort of a, an example of what can be done to other The Governor's staff will be here in the Great Hall tomorrow, I believe it's at 1:00 PM, to take input on the state's energy conservation plans for the next 10 years. If anybody has an interest in getting a couple words in on that, this would be the opportunity to do that. It's a state listening tour about New Hampshire's 10-year energy strategy. I did receive a interesting workshop notice. Of course, we get lots of workshop notices, but I thought this one might be of some interest because it's geared towards elected officials and town managers and administrators. It's on road maintenance. Road Maintenance 101 for local officials. And of course, our own Mr. Harriman is one of the panelists.
You better all show up.
So, I know you get questions and issues raised about road maintenance, and this would be an opportunity to become more familiar with those kinds of issues. Anybody's interested, we'll be glad to sign you up. And finally, I think the Board's aware I'll be away for about five days, beginning tomorrow, and I'll be returning on Thursday, 26th. Work. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Committee reports. Brad?
We've had a, we had a Planning Board meeting last night. Obviously, we had the presentation, was of the CIP, that the Planning Board also adopted last night. And then, we had a, some other discussions there, and that was it for public hearings, for me, other than other budget hearings that we've been visiting each other on a regular basis here.
Mm-hmm. Dave?
Yeah, just the budget meetings that we've been so patiently going through.
Linda?
Yeah, I went to the Chamber Executive Board meeting at Chamber Social. I attended the Friends of the Town Hall meeting. I went to the EDC meeting, and they were reviewing their mission and looking at materials for the master plan chapter for the EDC. And I went to a CIP meeting prior to this final draft coming forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dave?
I went to the Heritage Commission meeting. Also, one of our citizens wrote me a letter and said, "The Governor Wentworth site, state historical site out on Lake Wentworth, is overgrown with poison ivy and trees growing out and has not been maintained." And could I put them in touch? So, I put them in touch with the New Hampshire Historical Society, and maybe they can get in touch with Jeb Bradley. That's a state park. In the 1930s, the state had an information booth open there during the summer. But then, I talked to Maggie Steer about it. She's Chair of the Heritage Commission. She said that, and also involved in Concord, she said that the local residents there don't want tourists around, coming in and out of there, the people that live there in the summer. So, I don't know what's going to happen, so, but I just reported that I would, I'm contacting the state about it, so at least they'll be aware that one of our citizens feels it's fallen and disrepair. Maggie says, "Yes, it has been. It's just a mud hole. That's all it is, period." So, anyway, that's the status of that.
Questions from the press?
Yes.
They will move on public input. It's limited to three minutes per resident and not to exceed 15 minutes in total. Have any members of the public that wish to speak tonight?
Just to what Mr. Bauer has just described, from the Chamber of Commerce perspective, we have visitors who arrive to go to that site. So, it is an attraction for the Wolfboro community. They're coming to the Information Center to ask for directions. We've had people just recently, and interestingly, not complain about the conditions.
Will you write me?
Bring material back that they, you know, they're just fascinated by the history.
Will you write me a letter on Chamber Stationery that I can actually send to the state? Because, I mean, I think it should at least, you know, not have poison ivy. It should be visitable, even if the neighbors don't agree. It is state property, you know, so. If you write me a, if you write me a letter explaining, from the Chamber's viewpoint, that it's a popular thing, I'll distribute it to the EDC and others, okay?
I'd be glad to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne Ryan, Stonemore Road. I'd like to speak to the Board about the Classics Road issue. What I see as administrative missteps, and I've tried to put it in a kind of chronological order. It was 2015-16, Simmons submitted his request for a building permit. The first misstep was May 24th, 2016, when the Planning Board meeting. No objections. Our information would be a public hearing. Mr. Harriman assumed or interpreted that that meeting was a public hearing, when in fact, it was just a meeting. The second misstep was July 20th, when Mr. Reins for White Mountain, of White Mountain for Simmons, addressed the Board of Selectmen with the first plan of 2000, of 2015-16. And the agenda was not transparent. There was no address, no identification, no property given in any way, so Noah Butters would have had any notification or understanding of what was to transpire. The Board on the July 20th meeting had no discussion, no public input. Noah Butters knew, no policy evaluation criteria used. And in a couple of minutes, it was moved to approve. This plan would have destroyed the Greens' frontage and stone walls. On July 31st, 2016, the Greens wrote a cordial letter to the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. Not anyone from the town in any way ever acknowledged that letter. On August 3rd, 2016, I requested the Board of Selectmen follow the policy of evaluation criteria versus development. Mr. Senical, this was the first start of your interpretation, one-building, one-lot theme. We had all the information we needed with your statement. This is the start of the, Mr. Senical misleading an assumption. He knew, or he should have known, that that wasn't the case. He sat on March 10th, 2008, Zoning Board of Appeals as Vice Chairman, and he's very familiar with Class 6 Road through the Wiggins case, which is very similar to this one that we have before us. And that was the start of one-house, one-lot. Attorney Puffer tried to set the record straight with the Vashon versus New Durham case and RSA 7141, 67141. No building permits issued unless streets, street access, Class 5 or better applies to all building permits applications, not just subdivisions. Puffer represented the Board of Selectmen in an appeal in 2008. He quoted, however, applicants for building permits had argued that because they were not subdividing their property, IRS 67441 and the Town Classics Road parley issue under the statute did not apply to their property. However, the Supreme Court rejected that argument, holding that the language of 67441, quote, "clearly and unambiguously applies to all building permit applications, not just to subdivisions." On August 17th, 2016, I restated request to follow policy and gave all the paperwork on the case, Vashon, New Durham, and Third Park. on the case, Vashon, New Durham, and third-party liability, and a composite map showing Simmons' access via through a trail and a right-of-way through their front lots. At that time, Mr. Senical repeats again, one building, one lot. It was over, it was sometime over, just after that period, that Mr. and Mrs. Simmons exchanged She deeded the top lot to him, and he deeded the bottom two lots to her. By doing so, they intentionally cut off their access. On September 17th, I submitted a citizen's petition, request for a public comment for open government and responsiveness, and there was no response from the board. During and up until now, several Simmons' plans have been revised by, by White Mountain. They have gone to the public works, and through the efforts of the Greens, I will say that White Mountain was forced to, or compelled to submit a new plan, and that's what came before you on the 27th. The first pub, this was the first public hearing, and Hyde and Nix, those were the attorneys, they went through some of their criteria of the policy, but up until then, and up until tonight, the board of selectmen did not go through the criteria of their policy. The next misstep was administrative, and it was, the hearing was closed, instead of offering to continuance, therefore shutting off public comment. Another misstep, October 3rd, 2017, planning board agenda states public hearing driveway permit. Attorney Specter recommends board hear the appeal for the driveway permit. When the board discussed the jurisdiction issue, immediately after they finished that, a member motioned, no jurisdiction, thereby it closed any chance for a public comment. Another way of addressing that would have simply have been to hear it, deny it, and it would have gone to court if necessary. Last, regarding the one lot versus, one lot versus development, any construction or grading activity or real estate other than agricultural and silvicultural is, in fact, development. And we have, we have before us a approximately, what did I do with that? Approximately two acres of land being disturbed of a rural area, a scenic road, actually, it's really a pathway. And so you cannot say that that is not development. They're developing the road from a path, scenic path, to a vehicle-used pathway or roadway. They'll be developing the site with a house, a septic, and a well. There'll be easements for drainage, so it's development. And our own ordinance says developer, an owner, who intends to improve or to construct improvements on his or her property, and goes on to say, whatever, the purpose to promote the orderly growth of the town, to ensure that development is commiserous with the character and physical limitations of the land. Further, location and nature of new development takes into account the immediate, long range, and so forth. So, Mr. Senical, I sincerely and wholeheartedly disagree with the lead that you gave to the board of selectmen. You've totally misdirected them. And in doing so, the town has spent in excess of $16,000 for these missteps, which very easily could have been handled through some sort of public discussion with the Greens and the Abutters, and a resolution may have come to pass. Instead, we're now at a crossroads that I prefer not to address. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm gonna let David Senical speak, but I'm the amateur in this, in this, but I do believe it's correct that the, and I, the reason I abstained from the vote is because I felt that during what I thought was a very long hearing, where everybody could say whatever they wanted to a couple weeks ago, the, this property was bought by people that knew it was not buildable unless a special exception was, so it's not a surprise if it got voted against in the hearing Suzanne and hearing the Rossingers and so forth. That's why I didn't vote yes. I thought that both, the status quo, if nothing is done, the scenic area remains intact. But isn't it correct to say, Mr. Town Manager, that the selectmen can vote to overrule that and do whatever they want to if somebody wants to build something? Is that correct, or am I wrong?
Well, yes, the board can vote as it sees fit, but you do have criteria in your policy that are supposed to be followed.
But we can overrule that, right? I mean, in other words, I'm not gonna do this, but we can say, look, we wanna have a house built there, and do it, is that right? Or, okay, that's, that's what I thought, and anyway, but that's my, end of my comment.
Well, you know, Mr. Senical, you were vice chairman of the ZBA at the time the Wiggins case came through. You knew every aspect of it. I know you don't have that much of a lapse of memory, and you guided your counterparts through this process in a very unprofessional manner, and I'm being as polite about this as I possibly can be.
The board just made a decision on this matter, and I would recommend the board not discuss it in any detail with members of the public at this time. I just wanna say that.
Thank you. Any other public comment, sir?
My name is Kevin Green. I am the abutter. There was never any notification. By the time my wife and I found out about it, what was going on, we wrote a letter to each and every planning board member and selectman at the time. We brought it in individual envelopes into, now, this is like 14 months ago, into the area where we asked people to help us, and the woman, some woman took it. She says, "I can help you, I'll make sure they get it." So there was 12 envelopes for each and every member of the board. Yesterday, when I spoke, and Ms. Bernard said that they never received it, and we didn't do it the correct way, but we went into the town office in here and gave it to what we thought was a town employee who said that she would handle it and make sure everyone got that. Did any of the board ever receive our letter of how upset we were, and did you ever receive it? I know that Mr. Harriman said that he did not receive it.
I did not answer that last night.
Well, the hearing, you know, the sound in here is actually pretty bad, but I thought that you said that, you know-
Didn't you say, Mrs. Bernard, that you did not receive it? The letter?
Oh, okay, I thought that you didn't receive it. Actually, I thought that you said that you didn't receive it either. So maybe people have received it, or we don't know. Is that correct?
Should you be answering anything on this, or?
When I went to, the next step, trying to figure things out, we, we came in and asked to get what was on the file, and we got a plan and a few pieces of paper, and the plan actually turned out to be not the plan that Mr. Ryan's talked about at the, at the board. So I hired a professional engineer to go ahead and to go through the plan, which I thought was the plan because it was in the file. He went ahead and, you know, did a several thousand dollar report on the wrong plan because the plan that existed then was a hot plan that only Mr. Ford had. When I found that out, he allowed me to copy it, but, I mean, the way the whole system works here, all, when you go to file, there's really nothing in the file, or very little, and everything that's important is scattered around at people's desks, so you never really know what's going on here. I believe there's either five or six plans, and I believe I've spent way more than the town or Simmons on the engineering, and I believe that most of what has happened is that White Mountain has done a design-by-review where he puts out a plan, and then when someone else comments on it, then he fixes that, which is, my son, who's a professional engineer, says that's a very poor way to do things. So this is the kind of things that we've been going to. We haven't ever been allowed to speak, or just for the three minutes at the very end. I felt we've been treated very shabbily. The first time that we actually got to speak on September 27th was the day my wife died. So I was at the hospital, and I couldn't make it, and she couldn't make it. And really, it is my belief that even though on the death certificate that it says certain things, maybe she could have gotten three or four more months if she wasn't up all night for these last 14 months, trying to figure out like, why people wouldn't listen to us, wouldn't give us the time of day. And so I hold these two boards really partially responsible for my wife's death. Not that she would have lived much longer, but if I could have had a couple more months with her, that's really a long time when you have nothing. And right now, I'm at the point of where I will spend every penny I have in litigation to overcome this injustice, and that's all I have to say.
I wouldn't respond, Dave.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just saying that the board of selectmen, in my opinion, has given you and anyone else any requested opportunity to speak, including you just spoke a lot more than three minutes. No one told you to sit down, no, and as far as I know, no one ever told Mr. Rossinger or Suzanne to cut it short, and I think it's unfair to say the selectmen have stonewalled you. As a member of the board of selectmen, I know that I haven't. At the same time, we, the board of selectmen gets lots of paperwork. There was a situation on Clark Road where someone wanted to do this, and so we get a lot of paperwork, and we sort of leave it up to others to advise the town board what to do. The town does not go to the zoning board of a thing and say, tell us whatever, all your decisions so we can do them. The board of selectmen takes what they say and then analyze it, but we certainly have been fair to you or any other citizen, as far as I know, in letting you speak as you are tonight. So on the matter of public input, I think you, in my opinion, you had all you've requested.
This time I have, but the only other time I spoke, you know, they were like saying, "Three minutes."
I don't remember viewing-
So I actually end with the body language at that meeting. I just went ahead and spoke of the beauty of the area, and it's actually just a woodland path, that someone who has engineered their own problem then wants, you know, that wants everybody to say that they're the aggrieved party when they actually caused it all themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public that wish to speak tonight? Seeing none, all are taking a motion to-
Adjourned.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Wait, sign a few things.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Meeting's adjourned.